Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 11th, 2020 Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting, virtual meeting. In accordance with the State Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on May 6th to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmoud?
Surely. Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Dr. Harris? You're on mute, but I'm gonna, I see you, Dr. Harris. I'm gonna say you're here.
I'm here.
Thank you. Mrs. Maroon?
Here.
Mr. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Pulserfer?
Here.
Mrs. Stats?
Here.
Mr. Heo?
Here.
And Dr. Sasan?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic in which it stands, one nation, in the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thanks. We have the course, we've received the correspondence as listed in the agenda. We have one set of minutes to approve for our regular meeting on April 27th. Can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Judy.
Second.
Thank you, Lisa. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Or abstained?
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the superintendent's report is next. Can I ask our acting superintendent, Dr. Antounas, to give her report, please?
Yes, thank you. Some of you may know that Mayor Doug Thompson has formed a reopen Hillsborough Task Force for the Hillsborough Community. I am pleased to share that I will be serving on that committee and look forward to acting on behalf of the school district as important decisions are made about reopening our schools and the overall direction the community will go as the process of relaxing restrictions moves forward. Our first meeting took place last Thursday, and it was beneficial to learn what everyone was thinking and how the district may contribute and/or scale up the safety structures to determine if they are feasible in our school buildings. While challenges continue to mount, every, with everyone's assistance, I'm confident that the decisions that will be made will be made with the health and safety of the entire community in mind. I am thrilled to share that tonight's agenda includes the ratification of the contract between the Hillsborough Education Association and the Board of Education. Please accept my sincere thanks to all stakeholders, board, and HEA who worked tirelessly to get to this ratification. Congratulations to everyone. As you may know, and as stated on the school calendar, the board reserves the right to revise the school calendar at any time. Tonight's board me, agenda has a motion to approve the change in the 1920 district calendar relative to the four unused emergency closing days. The recommendation is to adjust the last day of school for students to June 16th, four days earlier than the original date of June 22nd. The last day for teachers is June 17th. A revised calendar will be on the website tomorrow morning. As a reminder, please help cast your vote for the Middle School Wind Ensemble. This is the last week we can do that. They are one of five finalists in the Rutgers Battle of the Bands competition. You can vote once per day from now through May 17th. You, to vote, you can go to the middle school website or to the ru.battleofthebands.com. I am pleased to send a shout out and congratulations to a high school student, Sadie Cordes, who's been awarded the New Jersey Governor's Award in the Arts and a scholarship from Art Educators of New Jersey. Go Sadie. I'm also excited to share the good news that high school junior Ryan Pearson received an award from the New Jersey Council for Social Studies. Mr. Fenster shared the news during a Google meet with, with her classmates. Last year, in U.S. History Month Honors, Ryan wrote a visual essay on the lavender scare of the 1950s, an outgrowth of the red scare that targeted LGBTQ people. She did this as part of her capstone project. The New Jersey Council for the so, for Social Studies was so impressed with her scholarship that they published her essay in their magazine. After being nominated by Mr. Fenster, Ryan was chosen as the Central Jersey High School recipient of the New Jersey Cor, uh, the New Jersey Council of Social Studies Student Recognition Award. Congratulations, Ryan. Since the early weeks of COVID-19, we have gotten wind of the extraordinary acts of kindness taking place throughout the community for both the Hillsborough Community proper as well as the larger Somerset, Hunterdon County communities. Many of these acts of kindness have been created and developed by our students. Whether the venue for creation and development came via religious, athletic, familial, or community organizations and/or affiliations doesn't really matter. The commonality here is that many of these extraordinary acts have come from the students of HTPS, our students. So a huge shout out and a big woo-hoo to all of you for taking the time to help and recognize others, from our essential frontline workers to those quietly caring for others in some way. It makes a difference. You make a difference. This past week was Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week and School Nurses Day. On behalf of the Board of Education and all administrators, I cannot think of a more ideal and meaningful time to express our gratitude for all that you have accomplished and continue to accomplish, either in person or virtually this year. Remember, you are valued, respected, unique, and so very much missed by your students. Thank you just isn't enough. Also, just a reminder that if your employment situation has recently changed as a result of COVID-19, and you believe your children may be eligible for free and reduced lunch, complete the food services application and don't hesitate to reach out to the business office with questions or concerns. If you're unable to drive to the grab-and-go location at the high school, reach out to your school nurse or building administrator for assistance. Additionally, we recently, were recently informed that during COVID-19 pandemic, students may receive meals free of charge even if the eligibility criteria for free and/or reduced lunch is not met, as long as we are able to affirm enrollment status in our schools. As explained previously and in several school messengers, the latest of which went out this morning, while it's not necessary for children to accompany their parents, it is important to have their POS numbers readily available. Dr. Sasan, that is the superintendent's good news for the week.
You're on mute, Dr. Sasan.
Sorry, the bar wasn't coming up to unmute myself. Thank you, Dr. Antounas, for that report. I'd like to join you and lend my voice, and I'm sure the board, uh, as, would like to join me as well, in thanking all of our staff and appreciating them. Um, as former HSA president and chair of the, uh, Teacher Appreciation Week and, um, it's really incredible, all of the work that goes into a regular school year, let alone a school year that has been hit by a pandemic. And, um, and then smack in the middle of the week, nurses, you know, Nurses' Day came up to School Nurses' Day. So, um, we, we all join you in saying thank you to them and lending our appreciation. Um, we do have committee reports, and then we will, um, we'll turn to our agenda. But, uh, there were three committee meetings, the Human Resources Committee, the Education Committee, and the Operations Committee, but they all met to discuss one topic. Um, so I will give the report for all three committees to save time, um, since they would be all reporting on the same thing. There was some question with all of the, um, the changes that were occurring recently and the governor's, um, guidance about what we should do, given the fact that, um, that school, that spring sports were unable to complete their season, and, and there were some other stipends as well. Um, and so we, um, the board was considering, we're, we're waiting for guidance to see whether or not we should pay out those, those stipended, um, positions. And, um, we had, uh, legal guidance as well from our, from our lawyer, Mr. Lapira. And the after-meeting with all three committees, the agreement that we'll pay out those stipends and that they will be in the May 15th, the first, the first payment would be in the May 15th payroll. Um, and so I'm happy to report on that. I know we have been, um, getting some questions from the, um, public regarding, um, any furloughs or anything that has, that have been happening within the district. And I'm going to ask Mr. Lapira to give, um, a statement on that.
Okay, thank you. Um, yes, so, um, with respect to the concept of whether or not, um, all public school employees should be or will be paid, um, whether or not furloughs are an option, and all of those questions, um, in many ways, our legislature and the governor have made it very easy for us, um, in the following way. Um, in, on April 14th, 2020, um, A 3904, uh, Assembly Bill, 3904, was passed. That has modified, um, Title 18A, uh, 7F-9, and it specifically provides that basically all school employees and contracted service providers will be paid in certain circumstances. So specifically what it says that, um, if there is a declared state of emergency or a declared public health emergency, which is what we have right now due to COVID-19, and if it's for a period longer than three consecutive school days, then public school employees covered by a collective negotiations agreement, i.e. union, shall be entitled to all compensation, benefits, and emoluments as provided in the collective negotiations agreement, as if the school facilities remained open for any purpose and for any time lost as a result of school closures or use of virtual or remote instruction. That's, uh, 9E1. The same is true for public school employees who are not covered by a collective negotiations agreement, so are non-unionized people. They also are entitled to payment, just as if schools were not closed. The same is true with contracted service providers. Um, now, when it comes to contracted service providers, there are some limits. The, uh, the law basically indicates that, um, it is intended to provide those contracted service providers with the ability to meet their payroll and fixed cost obligations. So the board, for example, is required to make all reasonable efforts to renegotiate those contracts. Um, and basically what they need to do is they need to make sure that the, um, the contracted service provider doesn't have business interruption insurance. If they do, we have to find out about that. And the negotiations have to essentially ensure that, um, no one is receiving a windfall as a result of this. So for example, transportation vendors, um, would get paid, but not 100% of their contract because they are not paying for tolls, they are not paying for fuel costs. So, uh, those things are specifically indicated by the legislature as things that are exempt, um, from, um, from these types of negotiated contracts. So they have to do that. And then the same is true of any contracts that we have with, um, joint-year commissions or special services school district or ed services commission, like the Somerset County Ed Services Commission. So, um, so in short, to kind of sum up, the legislature passed, um, that law, which is Public Law 2020, Chapter 27, and that was passed about a month ago. And that requires, um, the Boards of Education to make these payments as if school was still, um, in session physically and as if all of these people were still providing their services. Obviously, we know many teachers and other staff members are, are still working, um, as normal. There are some who are not working, um, because they cannot, but the law is very clear that we have to pay them, and we don't have an option. So in terms of a furlough or anything like that, that would be, um, contrary to what the law requires. If we tried to furlough certain employees, um, it would be our legal opinion that that would not be permissible, and that would violate the law. So, um, that's the, uh, for good or for bad, that's what the legislature determined should be done. Um, and so the board is currently meeting its legal obligations to do that.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, so the next item on the agenda is comments from the board and public on the action agenda. So I will, um, read the, uh, statement on that. We very much welcome input from the public during virtual board meetings. There will be one time during board meetings that the public is invited to submit questions or comments. Members of the public may comment about any item that is listed on tonight's agenda before the board votes, or may choose to discuss any topic. Before you submit your question or comment, you will be asked to provide your name and address. Please understand that our virtual public forums are not structured as question and answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes that there is a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. New Jersey statutes do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. So there is a tab on the website that you can click on, or there's a Google form that to fill out, and then that would get dumped right into, right onto my, um, uh, my, into the forum, and I will read it. So right now, I have a couple of people have written in. Um, Don Eelman on Murray Drive note, has a public comment, and she just wants to thank the HMS teachers for supporting our kids, uh, during these uncharted times. Yes, Don, we all join you in thanking not only the HMS teachers, but the other teachers. I also have an email, an email from Abigail Bailey on, on Chetwood, and she is asking if school is going to end early. So that is our calendar, uh, agenda item, which is coming up underneath the Education Committee, uh, meet, the Education Agenda, but I will, uh, blow the surprise there. Yes, we are taking our four, four school days, but we are proposing to do this if the board votes yes on this. We are proposing to end school early, so the new end date for school would be June 16th, would be the last day of school, so that the 17th, 18th, 19th, and 22nd, which had previously been in session, uh, would no longer be in session. Those would be utilizing our snow days for those. See if there's any more responses. If there is not, then I'll open up, uh, to the board, uh, to comments from the board on the action agenda. Um, I should say that we are going to, there is, there is another, um, another agenda item here, I mean, a public input from Robin DeVincen's of DeCamp Drive. Has there been any conversation about students getting their personal belongings? Um, I will answer that yes, that is ongoing conversation, um, within the administration, and, uh, and hopefully we will have some, um, information coming up about that in the coming weeks. Um, so I should cite that we are going to move two of our, uh, agenda items to, um, forefront, um, prior to going through the education agenda. Um, but I will take board comment before I do that. Um, we have another public comment from Brett Hammerschmidt of Rattleport. Hello, how will students make up what they are missing from this year? Um, there's lots of conversations going on about, um, about how best to make sure, uh, when we come back this year, um, how to remediate, uh, students, and, um, that information will be forthcoming, I'm sure, but these are things that we're all working on. Um, from what we're hearing, though, you know, there is a lot of good work still ongoing with the virtual learning, and so our hope is that, um, the, whatever plan we put in place would, would assist that. I don't know if they were, you were talking about academics or, or other things like prom and graduation and things like that. Obviously, those items, um, are being managed or directed by the governor. And so we are waiting to hear what we can do, uh, from, in, in that regard, and talking about that with, with various shareholders as well. Okay. So if I get any more public comments while the board, while the board is talking, yes, I see you, Mrs. Stats, um, I will read it, but otherwise I'll turn to the board now. So, uh, I'll start with Mrs. Stats.
Um, I have a question about a lot, item 11.2. Should I address that now or wait till we, are we gonna be doing all of the items at once?
We will, we will have discussion after, after the motion is made. So you can hold off on that until after the motion.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Okay. I'll look back at the public. I don't have any other items from the public. So with that, I will close, um, public comment and board comment at this time, and I will turn to the action agenda, and we are going to move up two of our very important action agenda, although I would, uh, I'm sure hear arguments that all of this is, was very important. But I would like to move, uh, hear a motion, uh, for item 11.1, the motion to approve the resolution to ratify the agreement between the Hillsborough Township Board of Education and the Hillsborough Education Corporation for the period of, of July 1, 2019 to June 30th, 2022.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas. So, Mr. Pulserfer, since, since you were the chair of the Negotiations Committee, perhaps you can, uh, summarize, uh, in, in a few statements about the, the work of the Negotiations Committee in this regard? Thank you.
Certainly. Uh, yes, so, uh, you probably all remember that we actually reached a tentative agreement several months ago. Um, and the reason we're just getting to this now is there's also a process after that point where, uh, we review and set up salary guides, uh, based on the settlement, uh, and work with the, the HEA on settling that. Uh, we also then have our, our legal team take all the negotiated language and go back and actually edit the, uh, contract document to make sure it now reflects all the changes from the negotiations. Uh, that takes a while, this review process, and, uh, as you all know, we've been kind of busy with other things this spring, so it's taken us a little longer, uh, to get to this point. So that's, uh, the process after the tentative agreement. The three, probably the three highlights to the, to the settlement, um, that we reached with the HEA, uh, there is a net of 8.8% raise over the total of the three years. For this contract, we have maintained the, uh, employee contribution to healthcare at the level it was at from the previous contract, and we have set a cap, uh, to tuition reimbursement, uh, at $272,000, which is based on our, uh, previous expenses and budget numbers. So those are the biggest points. There are some other, uh, language changes, but those three are the really big, uh, big things that, uh, we worked through the negotiations on this year.
Great, thank you. And this contract has been ratified by the, by the Hillsborough Education Association, um, I believe it was week before last.
I believe that's correct, yes.
Yeah. So, um, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? Mrs. Stats?
Uh, thank you. Um, I have a question about item 15.22, where it's mentions about personal days, um, that two personal days may be carried over as a personal day. Um, should that say two, two personal days may be carried over as two personal days in the next school year?
Yes. So as I said in my email to you earlier, that, that we are submitting, along with a couple of other requested changes in current, um, that was something that, uh, was missed in, in the previous version. But yes, so they can carry over two personal days. They get two personal days in a year. If they don't use them, they can carry over two, both of those days to use the next year. Um, but at no time would they have more than four, so they can only do that once.
Thank you.
That is something that the, that they requested, and, and the Negotiations Committee thought that was fair. So we gave that. Any other questions? Okay. May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmoud?
Surely, Dr. Sasan. Uh, Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulserfer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Dr. Sasan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I would like to personally thank, uh, Mr. Pulserfer for chairing the committee, and Mr. Heo, and Mrs. Haas for, um, being on the Negotiations Committee with me. With, there was a lot of very long hours, and, uh, and also would like to thank the HEA's negotiating team as well, uh, for spending all their time and energy, um, uh, that, and we came out with, I think, a, a good product, um, that people can be happy with, and I'm really happy that during this time of, of term, term, turmoil and tumult, that we can, at least we say that we have some stability, at least for the next two years with our teachers. Um, with that, I would also like to, um, hear motions for item 10.11, which is the motion to approve the appointment of the superintendent of schools. So, and before I hear the motion, I'll just say, um, that after much discussion across several executive sessions, the Board of Ed decided that we would not go to search for a superintendent of schools, as we felt we have a wonderful candidate already on board. So I'd like to, uh, take the motion and second to approve the appointment of Dr. Lisa Antounas as superintendent of schools for Hillsborough Township School District.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Stats. So the board, of course, has been working with Dr. Antounas and her role as acting superintendent since October 1st, um, 2019, and I believe she has demonstrated exceptional leadership during a very turbulent time. Uh, Dr. Antounas first joined Hillsborough Township as the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction in 2005. She also had a second stint as Acting Superintendent in 2007 here. Uh, she began her career in public schools as a special education teacher in Brooklyn, um, New York, and then moved to Hillside High School. And then, before coming to Hillsborough, she previously served as Assistant Superintendent of Schools in Jefferson Township. She holds a bachelor's and master's from St. John's, and her ED from, uh, Seton Hall University. So that, um, I would like to invite any board members to ask any questions, um, or make any comments at this time before we vote.
I would like to make a comment.
Yes, Mrs. Haas.
Um, um, I've known, I've known Lisa since August of 2005, when she first came to our board, and it was a very interesting time. Um, I came on the board in April of 2004, so I had a year without her, maybe a year and a half without her, during which time curriculum meant we would look at fourth-grade math, third-grade science, seventh-grade social studies, um, one class and one year at a time. And it all didn't get done, and it all didn't match when we came to going from grades to grade. So the first thing I would like to thank her for is articulating our curriculum after a lot of really hard work and, um, getting all of that straightened out so kids aren't unlearning what they learned the previous year. I also, um, you know, August 2005 was also BC for her, before children. And during that tenure, she's had the most wonderful two children, who are her greatest accomplishment, as all of us mothers feel. Um, she also significantly grew student achievement over the course of all of those years, and we're at a point now where Hillsborough is really recognized as a top-notch school district. So those accomplishments aren't enough. Um, when she became Acting Superintendent on October 1st, 2019, um, she had to get a referendum passed within two months. She had to get a, um, a teacher's contract passed, and she got that done within two months. And then she got a minor pandemic to deal with, which sort of was a nice addition for the job, if you think about it. But for all the years that I've known Lisa, I've known her to be smart, I've known her to be honest, I've known her to be ethical, and I've known her to be extremely caring. And before I get very emotional, I just want to say I am thrilled to finally see this acknowledgement. So, yay.
Thank you.
Lorraine, you're on mute, Dr. Sasan?
I'm, I have different things going on my screen, trying to make sure everything's great. Um, any other board members want to make a comment before we vote? Mrs. Stats?
Well, pretty much what Judy said, uh, Mrs. Haas said, um, especially when, I mean, it was like baptism by fire, or I guess pre-baptism with the, with the referendum and then the pandemic and the HEA contract. So, uh, thank you for rising above and beyond what the challenges have been.
Thank you, Mrs. Stats. Yeah, I, I have to say that I've obviously worked very closely with Lisa for a number of years as being on the Education Committee and now as, uh, as Vice President, previous two years, and then now as President. Um, it, it has been a rough few months, um, and, uh, it, it's unfortunate that we're bringing you in. And it's unfortunate that we're bringing you in sort of, you know, this way where, you know, all nine of us are in different spots and you're at another different spot and your staff can't be with you. But, and your family can't be with you, but hopefully they're they're off camera somewhere and, you know, listening to these wonderful things being said about you so that they can join you in celebrating later. Okay, with that, seeing no other comments, may I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmoud?
My pleasure, Dr. Sosan. Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Absolutely, yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes, and congratulations.
Thank you.
And Dr. Sosan?
Yes, absolutely. Woohoo!
I'd like to say we have a quorum, and I'm going to stick my two cents in. Dr. Antunes, congratulations on behalf of the entire administration, the central administration. We're delighted to be working with you, so it's really a pleasure. I had to sneak that in, sorry.
Well, that's so wonderful. Thank you so much. I think I'm going to make my kids and my husband watch this whole board meeting afterwards so that they could hear all those wonderful things, because I don't think they think those things. But thank you so much. And, you know, it really is about the people with whom you work. And I am one of the luckiest because for 15 years I have worked with some of the best and brightest people, whether they are board members, staff members, administrators. It's just been a really, really wonderful experience. And I look forward to working, continuing to work with the board, our staff, the HTPS community to ensure that our students continue to receive the excellent and fiscally responsible education. I'm excited to serve the community in this capacity of superintendent. It feels weird to say that. And I want to thank everybody. I want to thank the board for your confidence in me, and I so look forward to talking, when I can actually talk and see everybody walking the hallways. So thank you so much. It's it's been a wonderful ride and I expect it to continue. So thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Antunes. Yeah, so two very important things with the CNA now being ratified by both sides, and I have for board members' approval, received an email from Mr. Goodhue, signed by the HEA after ratification, so that we can, Mr. Pulsofer and I sign to finalize that, and we'll file that then. So the next piece is for now not acting, but the Superintendent of Schools to go for our action agenda.
Excellent. Okay, we're going to move the agenda as a whole, except for those two motions that we've already approved. So the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the Education Agenda 9.1 to 9.3, the HR Agenda 10.1 to 10.10, and the Ops Agenda 11.2 to 11.4. So we'll start with, we're going to go through it all. I just want to read them through. Motion to approve the revision to the 1920 district calendar. Resolution to approve revisions to the district flexible learning plan. Motion to approve policies and regulations for second reading. Motion to approve retirements and resignations. And I'd like to point out some of these retirements. Mr. Bostwick, Teacher of Science, from September 2000. Mary Brennan, one of our instructional assistants from 2006. Karen Drill, one of our special ed teachers from 1986. Deborah Mendez, our instructional assistant from 1995. Barbara Pearson, our speech therapist from 2004. And Michelle Ristel-Lunchade from 2005. Motion to approve contact changes. Motion to approve transfer and change in assignment as listed. Motion to approve revised leaves of absences and leaves of absences. Motion to approve appointments. The motion to approve renewal of non-tenured certificated staff for the 2021 school year. And motion to approve renewal of non-tenured HPSA staff for 2020, 2020, 2021 school year. Motion to approve the renewal of non-tenured, unaffiliated administrators for the 2020, 21 school year. And motion to approve policies and regs for second reading. And in operations, we're going to approve the resolution, I'm sorry, we did that one. We're going to approve the resolution opposing Bill S2392 and Assembly Bill A3969. We're approving a resolution for a finance bid and approve policies for second reading.
Sosan, I'd like a second, if I could, to explain the new item. I did speak to Mr. Gillette, Operations Chair, before the meeting. That's 11.3.
Yes, please, Mr. Mahmoud. Would you do that now prior to board discussion?
Sure, thank you. So that motion is a motion that we got very late in the day from Mrs. Gorep, our bond counsel, who was able to help us with the So this motion just allows the board and administration to go ahead and move forward with the financing for the buses that were in our budget that were approved, and also the technology plan that was in our budget to be approved. So we were, we have to, we had to do this in order for us to get the financing, because as you all know, in our budget, those are leases, and we have to get the ball rolling on that. There will be a public bid, and we're working with the 100 Inn County ESC on the financing and the bidding process. So with that, we're excited about this resolution. And we're hopeful that not only can we get the vehicles on the transportation side, but if we get lower numbers when we work with the bus companies and see if we can negotiate, we would like to see what we can do with the fleet on the buildings and ground side. So that, while it's not determined for sure, it's something that was in budget and we would try to make that happen if we can negotiate prices, which we're going to try to do.
Thank you, Mr. Mahmoud. Is there any discussion on any of the items from the board members? I think, Mrs. Stats, you had one on 11.3, the resolution against the results. Yes, please.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify some things. This is related to what was stated earlier about how school districts are, were required to pay all of our employees 100% of their contracts, and also even including stipends and for coaches and advisors. What I'm, but we, what I'm wondering, Mr. Lapierre, maybe you can help me out here, I'm not putting on the spot. Are municipalities required to pay all of their employees 100%? Is the state requiring them to do that?
To my knowledge, and I apologize because I have mostly focused on the Board of Ed side, but to my knowledge, there has not been a similar type of law. I mean, so the passage of this law was intended to address a number of things, including the 180-day requirement to permit virtual instruction, so on. And so as a corollary to that, it also indicated that everyone has to be paid. So in terms of what municipalities are doing, candidly, I can't say if they're required, but school districts definitely have been, I don't want to say singled out, but school districts have definitely been provided with special requirements in terms of those payments.
Thank you. I mean, I was aware, just maybe by hearsay, that some employees in Hillsborough Township employees have been furloughed. We, as a district, can't do that. So this resolution I fully support because even if we prorated, even if the amount of revenue we get is appropriated according to our usual amount of tax revenue, it still would not be fair, I guess, because we need 100%. And we can, and as has been pointed out in the resolution, the municipalities are empowered to borrow, and we can't do it as simply as they can. So I just wanted to make those comparisons and have you clarify them. So thank you.
Mr. Gillette?
I have a question for Vic. You there, Vic? So this is a related question, I think. So about the stipends for the activities and athletics and the like. I understand that. We discussed it. It's all good. But that's for the current school year? Like, let me put it this way. If the governor says on August 1, there's no fall sports, I can't see paying for a whole coaching staff for football at that time. I mean, we just wouldn't have it. We wouldn't begin those positions. I mean, another, a related thing, as far as teachers go, if we had a sudden decrease in enrollment, 50 kids moved out of the district, could we have two fewer teachers next year? Do we have to keep paying? So those are my questions.
Right. Those are good questions. And my understanding in terms of, you know, having unfortunately read through this law many, many times, is that it's not limited strictly to the 1920 school year. It does say in the event of closure of schools due to a declared state of emergency or declared public health emergency for more than three consecutive school days. Now, presumably, I could see a scenario in which, although I don't think this would happen, but you theoretically could have a scenario in which school resumes at, you know, in physical attendance, but sports do not resume, especially contact sports. I mean, I wouldn't be shocked if that happened at some point. And then I think you're talking about something different, because at that point in time, schools would not be closed for three consecutive school days. Let's say, for example, schools open up physically again in September, but all fall sports are closed. I think then in that scenario, again, just having heard the question now for the first time, my inclination would be is that no, in that scenario, the conditions requiring payment would not be met, which are closing for three consecutive school days. So I don't think that that would happen there. But in terms of the other scenarios too, right, I mean, if there was a reduction, this doesn't preclude a reduction in force, but that reduction in force can't be simply to not pay people as a result of the COVID-19 health emergency. However, if we had to reduce our staff members due to unrelated issues, such as, as you indicated, enrollment decreases, then that would be fine, and that wouldn't be permissible. I mean, that wouldn't be prohibited, excuse me. So yeah, it's an open question, at least, with regard to that stipend issue for next year. If you have some kind of a unusual circumstance, but I think, and you know, don't hold me to this point, but I would say that the way that the law is written right now, it doesn't seem to give an out if, for example, schools were not opened in September. Hopefully, that's not the case, but it doesn't seem to be an out for that. It would be the same situation that we're in today, which is a public school health-related closure for three consecutive days a month.
So just a quick follow-up, if you don't mind, and then, okay, so as far as advisors and coaches, we appoint them new every year. That's not an ongoing position. Those are appointed with theoretically a start date, and the start date for the sports is theoretically the date that the NJSIAA says practice can begin.
Right.
That is their technical start date for the contract. So if the start date for the fall sports by NJSIAA is August 15, and we find out on August 1, there will be no fall sports, would we not be permitted just not to appoint and never begin the contract?
Yeah, that's a good question, and I think one that has yet to be answered. But I think, I mean, so there's no question that if the board decided due to enrollment, for example, let's say, just to use, I don't know, let's say a baseball team, and you had a baseball team, and I know that's not a fall sport, but still, let's say you had a baseball team and you only had six people sign up, and you couldn't field a team. You know, in that scenario, certainly, we wouldn't appoint a coach, and we wouldn't pay a coach for that, because the sport itself is not being run. So, you know, there's a number of different scenarios that might give rise to not not paying out stipends. But you're correct. We appoint stipends on, really like on a seasonal basis, and even though there are stipends in the contract, there's no requirement that you actually run those sports or run those extracurricular activities. That is a board-level decision. So there may be years in which, and typically that's done due to, not necessarily the word enrollment, but I mean, it could also be popularity, right? I mean, you might have a stipend for a club, and if only two people have signed up for that club, and last year there were three people, and the year before there were four people, you might not run that club anymore. And then that's not going to get paid. So, yeah, there might be a scenario, to be sure, in, during which you would not be paying out stipends for fall activities, if there are no fall activities. But it's really going to depend upon what the circumstances are. And I would think that if there are no fall activities, but there is school, then I don't, I don't see how there could be an argument for paying out those. If there is no school, still shut down due to public health emergency, then I think there's an interesting question as to whether or not, if the board never appoints any coaches, then I'm not quite sure how those coaches would be entitled to payment. So interesting questions. Hopefully, hopefully, knocking on wood, we won't have to come up with the answers to those. And we'll be back in school and kids will be playing sports in the fall, but we'll see.
Thank you, Mr. Lapierre and Mr. Gillette. Mrs. Stats, did you have something you wanted to say, or was it answered? Okay, it was answered. Anyone else with any other questions on any of these? Then items? Okay. Then a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmoud?
We don't have a motion and a second, Dr. Sosan.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. I am ready, Dr. Sosan. Thank you. Mr. Gillette?
Yes, except using Vic's exception rule. No for 9.3, Policy 2422. Yes to everything else.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Gillette. Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes, with exception to 11.2, I'm a no.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes, except for, I'm sorry, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Yes, except for 11.4, Policy 7243. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heo. And Dr. Sosan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Right, thank you. Before I take a motion to adjourn, I think I have another public comment from Dr. Trabowski, who is the Chair of the Hillsborough Principal and Superintendent's Association. And his comment is, "Congratulations to Dr. Antunes. Lisa has been an integral part of the outstanding student-centered leadership that is a hallmark of Hillsborough's excellence in education for many years already. On behalf of the Hillsborough Principals and Supervisors Association, we look forward to continuing their that great work under the leadership of Dr. Antunes for many more years to come." So I just wanted to pass that on. So does any board member have any additional comments before I take a motion to adjourn? I'll just note that our next board meeting is next Monday because of the Memorial Day holiday. And with that, I will take the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Pulsofer. Thank you, Mrs. Maroon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposing or abstaining? No? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.